So this, for this historic site review, the suggested standard is the review habilitation. And each item within that standard has been recommended as a map. So I don't have each one of the items memorized, but there is a chart within the staff comment, the staff report, that lays out each one of those items, 1, 3, 5, and 6. And so the applicant has filled out the short environmental assessment form. STAT is suggesting that this application is complete. And therefore, there would be a public hearing associated with this, dependent on the board's determination of completeness. And with that forward. So the review habilitation standards that are recommended to apply to this are standard number two. The material at the time of nomination of the property is not identified. The applicant has proposed an in-kind replacement with the same material that is presently on site. Number three, the analysis is that the applicant does not oppose any changes beyond the in-kind replacement of the routing materials. Number five is the applicant proposes an in-kind replacement to preserve the character of the structure. So the character of the structure will be preserved. And then number six is the applicant is demonstrating widespread significant deterioration of the same materials in efforts to temper and stabilize as referred to iteration have been made. Repair does not appear to be feasible or adequate at all replacing what's necessary. And the applicant proposed a replacement that matched the full in-design color texturing.
So I understand that this application has been on hold for several months.
That is correct. The applicant came to us, I believe it was around mid- set summer approximately, if my memory serves me correctly. The applicant is here with us tonight, but is not speaking at this time. And STAT assisted the applicant in meeting with the building department to discuss the emergency situation and advised that unfortunately, there was no other way to permit the full replacement without having to come through the historic site review because the house is on the historic register within a historic neighborhood and actually that's the neighborhood. And we assisted the applicant in assembling the application to get onto the planning board agenda as quickly as possible. They couldn't make the very next meeting because the deadline had passed. We tried for the October meeting and unfortunately, there was a scheduling, the applicant had a scheduling conflict. Then we were looking at our November meeting. We didn't have the full board. So that applicant decided to postpone until this meeting.
In that, has the SHPO referral been received to date?
The SHPO referral has not been received to date. STAT submitted the request for a review by SHPO pretty much as soon as the application was admitted back early October, I believe. And unfortunately, there was an issue with the software and SHPO wasn't able to see the submission. So we've had a series of back and forth conversations with SHPO. We were hopeful that we would get the final determination back by this meeting. But I checked earlier today and the review is still open on their end. But they have received it, they can see it on their end. So we believe the issue has been fixed, but it wasn't fixed soon enough. This application is in a very similar fashion to another application that came in earlier this year for 102, I missed my excuse.
102 Bridge Street.
Yes, 102 Bridge Street, which was also a full replacement of a historic structure in the same district. SHPO had no concern.
Did SHPO give any indication in your discussions with them as we were trying to find lines, did it give any indication?
They were trying to have a response back to us today, so.
I mean, maybe more perceived, but I do think that's one consideration for us to think about if we're retaining consistency with received applications and long ago we decided referral to SHPO was something that we appreciated in the applications. We have held other applications for a final SHPO response. Saying that's the decision here, but that's something the board has to decide. Hold for others, why would you not hold for this one? If you're not to hold for this one, you have to outline that reason why this is different. For discussion. I'm gonna tell you the other board, I didn't answer questions. That's my thoughts of them, because I'm looking at this.
So I assume then, without going back and looking, that SHPO had not had an issue with the in-kind asphalt replacement for the 102 Bridge Street as a precedent?
I don't recall.
I think that's what Alicia said.
That SHPO didn't have any concern with the 102 Bridge Street?
That's right.
And I don't know, I mean, Macomb Street's the same, the 13 Macomb Street is in the same situation. And I assume same mill comics from SHPO.
It is a very similar, that was a very similar project with the exception of the Macomb Street itself standing seam metal room rather than shingles. So, and SHPO did not have an issue with that, they had no concern.
Maybe something for the board to consider in the resolution is that this application is an emergency replacement. Something has proceeded, it's something that's already done. You sure twice that you've received something from SHPO?
Yeah.
Does this change the direction that board would take with this application?
Yeah. I don't know about special circumstances too, just because if there was a delay because the board was out and if there was a delay because of the software issue.
Sure.
I don't know.
But I think we should make sure that we build that into the direction. Think there's a balance?
No.
Okay, we should, I think we're good.
For that one?
For that one.
Okay, great. The next agenda item will be 23-06 for the new week car wash site. It's a proposed site plan modification. The request is to modify previously approved site plan, which thereby changed the site circulation, location of parking spaces and impervious area. It's located at 321 Cornelia Street. The property is owned v. 2. The applicant is here on behalf of Car Care Co. Inc. And repair is Mike Hoon, P.E. of AEDA. And both of those individuals are here with us tonight as well.
So Alicia, if I can start out real quick. I would be accusing myself in this application seeing that AEDA has prepared a plan for this and I'm part of that firm. Abby is graciously stepping up as the chair position and Andrew will be stepping in as the fourth member of this application.
So for those reviews, you have some papers?
I got my shirt first.
Yep, they did see.
Did you take a danger?
I didn't have a safety.
Just want to make sure I didn't discuss anything.
Oh wow. Do you have any chapters?
So I think it would be best, we've got a full packet here with the application, the stat report, little bit of the review history with the zoning board of appeals, applications and referrals. Correspondence between the planning staff and the building department back in 2021. Some subsequent emails and the referral form to, the 2023 referral form for 239M to planning company, planning board, and their response back. They heard that this was a local decision. And then subsequent material supplied on December 7, which is in the form of a response letter from AEDA, Mike Hoon, and an updated partial as-built site plan. On the left-hand side, that this is the original site plan that is approved in 2021. On the right-hand side of it is the partial as-built site plan. And I think what would be beneficial to the CBA is to focus on the staff report. The application summary begins the staff report. There's items 1 through 9 that gives the background through the approval and into the number nine additional note from 11/28/2023. The second story of the building that was originally approved was removed from the site plan and the office space was reduced from 1,000 square feet, which was located, planned to be located on the second story of the building, that was reduced from 1,000 square feet to 300 square feet, thereby essentially reducing the required number of parking spaces. The parking requirements for this use are determined by the office space needed. That parking is required to be one space per every 250 feet of office space, thereby reducing the total required parking spaces from four to two. The other item of note is the seeker. So given that this was a full site, site plan approval and they're coming in for a modification now, the applicant has requested to utilize the part one short VA app that was provided as part of the 2021 application as no substantial environmental changes have occurred in their opinion. The planning board had previously determined that no significant adverse impacts were identified for this project. So it is the recommendation of the planning staff that the planning board reaffirm the prior determination that the proposed action will not result in a significant adverse environmental impact and does not further recommend that the planning board reaffirms its finding of a negative determination of significance for this project. There were no major departmental comments back other than DPW did provide a comment regarding proposed work along Cornelia Street that would affect the sidewalk along the frontage of this property. And then beyond that, I would have the focus on staff comments 1 through 9.
So where it says as-built, I mean, they're currently, because the paving is done, so I mean, those spots are where they are. But markings, paint markings and whatnot could be, are yet to be done?
There have, there has been some line delineation completed. And we do have a picture of the property frontage that shows some of that. So it's labeled partial as-built because I believe the applicant is expecting to, they haven't fully finished all of the site amendments and are probably expecting that we may have additional conditions.
So I'm sorry if I just don't understand. This is what was approved?
Yes.
This is what they made?
Correct.
But that's okay, that they didn't do what was approved?
That's why they're here tonight, because they have a modification. So the reason why the modifications have occurred and they're bringing, that they're requesting that modify the site plan that was previously approved was that there was, there's a garage door associated with the car wash and during construction on site, it was determined to shift that door, the location of the door, two feet to the east, which made it so that the four originally planned parking spaces that were to the northeast of the building could no longer be accommodated because of maneuverability.
Okay, and so then the two spots did here?
They shifted the spots all around. They redistributed the spots all around the site. So there's one spot planned for the northeast corner, one for the northwest corner, parallel to the property lines, and then two angled at the southeast and southwest corners of the property, which those two, they're, one of the conditions of the previous approval of the site plan was that there be a vegetative buffer, an fence along that property line to separate the two zone districts in this use, this more intensive use with the residential R1 property that is directly south of that.
I think one issue I see is like this area, they've made smaller the vegetation area, the buffer between the residential. And I know they're saying that they're gonna haul the snow off-site. But if they're trying to plant a vegetative buffer here and snow does get piled and pushed there, it's going to most likely destroy it if they do that in the first two years, like while the vegetation is growing up. Does that make sense? So unless they like really keep to the plan to haul the snow off-site, they don't, you know, if that's going to work. Or having these employee parking spots there, like they're going to have to make sure that they don't ever go off the asphalt or they could destroy that vegetation if that's needed. Yeah, I mean, in the staff report, there looks like STAT suggesting removing parking stalls 3 and 4 to protect the buffer. But if they've already poured the concrete, I mean, that could just be very close.
No.
Yeah, the spots are already there, they've already put asphalt there.
So yeah, it looks like this, this one will have a number of kind of comment and conditions to the motion.
And I would, within these staff comments, I would like to draw attention to number three. So that is a suggestion that the applicant still may want to consider reducing the number of turn lanes exiting the site to one single right-hand only turn lane if they wish and if the board would support them re-complaining, relocating the two parking spaces that they now have at the south end of the site to the north portion of the site and to help improve maneuverability onto and off of the site.
That does seem like a tough area to take a left out instead of taking a right. I think what they go outside across the road makes you even only turn right out of there. You can't turn left. I don't know if the discussion was previous to that, but.
I think it's, yeah, I read in the report too. I mean, they are closer to the lights, so they have the light to control a little bit because they're closer there. But procedurally, what would that mean? If we approved the two-way, but the zoning board only approved the one-way, do they have to go back to the CBA and get a variance, effectively?
The zoning board essentially approved having two turn lanes to exit the property in their approval to widen the third cut beyond the allowable distance for the renovation.
Which we would be, I guess, so they wouldn't need it if we, if the suggestion would be to take one of those turn lanes, narrow it and turn the other turn lane into a parking area. There wouldn't be any issue going, they wouldn't need to go back to the CBA then for that.
Right, it would mean that that variance approval was kind of the point?
Yeah, exactly.
But I would still recommend that if you have a period that parking could be relocated there. And I think with the engineer, the design engineer here with us, he may be able to explain whether or not that could be what he did.
Alicia, are you suggesting that if that, this kind of this extra, this lane were removed and that came back? Parking would then, you would rotate that parking stall number one, 9 and 10, and they would?
Or potentially it could be an angled parking space.
Right, because truck gets leaving.
Exiting the car wash can still have a barrier.
Yeah, they still have to, yeah, come over, jump over.
Right.
So when they reduce the size, then that reduces the number of parking spaces that are required.
Yes, they just need the floor. And they're not required.
Right. I mean, I'm curious, this is the, this would be the third new way car wash in the city area. I don't know if you guys can imagine, there's not really much parking. But I guess I don't know if there's an office space either, the other locations either.
I mean, how many, I guess that's been returned speed, but then they really need the parking spaces.
No, but they do need some if they're going, they said that they're gonna be taking the trash away. They're gonna be like hauling the snow and trash. Like they do need some spaces unless they're gonna be closing down on days when they have to do snow hauling or on days when.
Yeah, but the parking spots aren't necessarily like a snow storage.
Yes, if you're going there in cloud, you're not really trying to separate the.
But I understand what you're saying about delivery, but that's, I mean, I guess this could be one of these other parks. It's going to be a delivery.
There are a lot of, a lot of going during the snowstorms to get their car washed, so they could come and have space to.
I guess maybe that's not, but I think for some of the things that they said they're going to be doing, they will need at least some spots.
Yeah.
Any other questions you guys want to hash out on this right now?
The vegetative buffer on there, you may spread this, because I'm spread in 03. Was it more in line of preventing the noise and the nuisance than it was like, I guess, water runoff? Because there is a water catchment system, a little water separator there.
Correct.
So it's not meant to be, it's a noise, it's sort of a noise in a distance buffer.
Correct. And for separate uses. So I just want to remind the board it's six of the pop.
Yep.
Great. Is somebody in the conference back in? Thank you.
So. Okay, it's now, we'll pass, we'll pass 6.
Okay. It is now, we'll pass, we'll pass six.
Six oh one.
Yeah, six oh one. So call the regular planning board meeting to order the plan to save September twenty twenty. We can all rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart. Roll call please.
James Adella?
Yes.
Rick Perry? Abby Leeser Barrett?
Yes.
Tom Cosgrove?
Yes.
Carly Leary?
Yes.
Sarah Stansberry?
Yes.
Andrew Pass.
Yes. Thank you. We do have two applications on the agenda for tonight. Start with application number one and we're at application twenty-three dash zero five.
So for twenty-three dash zero five, this is for thirty-three Hamilton Street. It's roof replacement, twenty twenty-three historic site review. The request is to replace an existing asphalt shingle roof on the primary and accessory structures within the incite asphalt shingle roof to the real property located within the Point Historic District that is listed on the natural register. Again, it's located at thirty-three Hamilton Streets. The parcel number is listed here. It's zone R two. The applicant, owner, and planning preparer is here with us this evening, LaMaya Alley. Here is a look at the star on the map is the apartment location of the property. It lies within the R two zone district. And here is a close-up of the property and the house. And you can kind of make out under the two zero seven where the garage is. It's right up against by the property line on the western side behind the house. Here's a street view of the front of the house. You can see some patching on, on the main roof, a little bit of different, two different colors up there. And then here's a view looking at the south west side of the house. And then you can see the garage, the big catch garage to the rear of the property there. Here's a close-up of what the roof condition looked like. And then here is the garage where it's pretty well insulated. So it made, made sense in the applicant's mind to have both roofs contracted to be completed at the same time and have them all come through this review at the same time. The historical significance of this site is that the property was constructed circa eighteen ninety to eighteen ninety-nine. It's an Italianate executed in a restrained manner. The notable features are a catch roof and articulated trees with large curved brackets and corner entrance. The roof material was not identified on the register form. Down in the last corner is the house, a picture of the house when it was nominated. And to the right is where the, the location map, the nomination corner. The proposed alterations are the incite replacement of an asphalt roof on the primary structure and accessory structure. The material proposed is owning according to roof definition, duration chingles. And the material color is that which is circled here, the brown wood, the brown wood, brown wood. The application notes is that the applicant saw an emergency repair for a leaking roof in late September. The main roof and the garage roof were scheduled to be replaced in mid-October. The material of the roof at the time of the nomination is not identified. However, at the time of replacement, was an asphalt shingle roof. The building inspector's office had no current on file from nineteen eighty to the present to identify when the current roof was installed. So we couldn't go back on that and determine what their original approved material was. But the material proposed matches what we, what we come off of it. Again, the SHPO referral, we're still waiting for a response back. We began requesting a review from SHPO in early October and there were issues with the referral system. We hope to hear a response back by this evening, but unfortunately we have not. Other similar applications in this district for all roof repairs have had SHPO responses of no concern. And that's what we would expect here, that we do not confirm without their response. The evaluation of precedent for the historic site review is that no recent historic site review has been completed for this specific location. Application twenty-two dash sixteen for thirteen Moncom Street is a similar application to replace an existing asphalt roof with a standing same roof within, within a historic district and was approved by the planning board in twenty twenty-two. And then the next is an application of twenty-three dash zero four for one zero two Bridge Street, which is a similar application for an incite replacement of an existing asphalt roof within a historic district and was approved by the planning board in August twenty twenty. Summary of review comments. The department reviews provided no concern by DPW or the fire department. And we did not receive any other department comments back. The applicable standard is recommended as rehabilitation. It's been identified as the applicable treatment standard for this application. The evaluation of the rehab standards two, three, five, and six appear to be applicable and also appear to have been satisfied. So there is a detailed evaluation chart that follows this that shows standard two. I'll let you all just take a second to read that through. That the standards have been met. Appear to have been met. Standard three, again, standards appear to have been met as well as five and six. The other standards were seen as not applicable. And so this is the end of my presentation to you all. I would turn it back over to you, Jim.
We do have the applicant here today.
Yes.
It's your opportunity, if you have anything else additions to add, you can step up to the podium and just give your name if you have anything else to add.
Hi, everyone. I just want to thank you for your time and all that. I want to assure you I won't do it without permission first. I didn't know the process. Thanks, Alicia, for me a great deal. The reason I did it without standing before you is the, most of the local company was kind of closed and I knew I wasn't making the deadline for October. And that's the only reason why I did it before I signed it for you. Other than that, I would put that in circle there in myself. So thank you. That's all I want to add. Thanks.
Thank you. Before we move to the public hearing, any board comments, questions, questions for the applicant?
I'm sorry if I just misunderstood. Did you say you already did it?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is discussed in the pre-meeting visit, this emergency application. And the board have already done. That is actually one of the reasons I was thinking also that it potentially gives an option for a motion. We don't have a SHPO review.
Yep.
Typically, we have SHPO review before we move forward an application.
Yes.
Than the standard we held to. But I think it's, in order to move this one forward without, in half the reasoning.
Otherwise, it would just be in limbo another month if we did it.
Well, beyond that, it's not keeping the consistency with what other applicants that we have had.
Okay, this needs more sense now. I guess I missed that when we were discussing it earlier.
I completely missed that on the pre-meeting too, so it's fine.
Okay.
Oh, and you go there, okay.
I thought that they were, the roof was still leaky.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's done. Yeah, I get it now. I mean, I think the board knows my stance on these, which is, you know, an incite roofing replacement makes complete sense to do as early as you can, especially with a, with a structure like this where you've got the decorative freezes that are up near the top that could get water damage as well. So you can't stem any of that and it could lead to further deterioration. And you just want to get that replaced as, as fast as possible. So if there were issues with the SHPO, you know, software issue, I think that's a perfect example of an exception for this particular one. So I'm happy to make the motion when we get to that part. But then I think that in combination with the idea of, it's already done.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think, yeah. I think that's good. Both words. Alicia, real quick, can you pull back to the current photo?
That what you're looking for?
Yeah, I think so.
But that's not after the replacement? No.
This is before. So it looks, so one thing I just wanted to recognize in that is the, I guess, is it does look like this, this roof does not have metal valleys. And if you pull up, if you can pull up to the photo of the historic pictures. I noted that the valley on this has, so in all likelihood, you know, the roof has been replaced since that picture in the late seventies. I just wanted to recognize that in the applicant. And my only other question, I guess, was to the applicant, in terms of the work, this was just roof chingles replacement? You know, we weren't looking at fascia repair or any other, any other aspects of the building that would repair?
Absolutely, just the roof.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I live right near here. I'm like, they did it. I remember driving around the trucks and seeing them up there.
And if I want to add, Alicia, I think I sent the picture, I'm not sure, after, it looks the same after it was done.
Well, if there's no other board comments or question, we do have a public hearing associated with this application. So I will move to open the public hearing. Does anybody that might have a public comment? Is there anyone online that?
We have not offered.
Okay.
Zoom.
Public comment?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if there's no one that has any additional public comments, then I'll move to close the public hearing. Move on to the, we do have a draft secret resolution twenty-three dash zero five A. Alicia, you can maybe run through part two of the, the board.
Yes. Okay, so part two, to be completed by the agency. You'll answer all of the following using the information that was contained in part one supplied by the applicant and any other materials submitted by the project sponsor or otherwise available to the reviewer, which is you. When answering the questions, the reviewer should be guided by the concept. Have my responses been reasonably considered, considering scale and context of the proposed action? So there are eleven questions I'm gonna read through. And there's two answers you can provide. So if I don't hear, if I don't hear moderate to large, I will assume that it's the first, no or small impact may occur. So it's no or small impact may occur or moderate to large impact may occur. So unless I hear otherwise, I will assume the question is no or small impact. So the first question, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use or zoning regulation? Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of the land? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? Will the proposed action result in adverse changes in an existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkability? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and its fail to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Will the proposed action impact existing, A, public-private water supplies? Or B, public-private wastewater treatment utilities? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic architectural or aesthetic resources? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? For instance, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, floor, and tunnel? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? Will the proposed action create an hazard to environmental resources? So with all of the no boxes checked, check this box if you've determined based on the information and analysis above, any supporting documentation, proposed action may result in one or more potentially large. There's no, no impact.
So with it completed, part one and part two, we do have a draft secret resolution twenty-three dash zero five A reflecting no impact. Finally, do you have a motion?
I have a motion. Carly, you have a motion?
Do you have a second?
Second. Carly, second? Yep.
Roll call.
James Adella?
Yes.
Abby Leeser Barrett?
Yes.
Tom Cosgrove?
Yes.
Carly Leary?
Yes.
Sarah Stansberry?
Yes.
Thank you. With the environmental, uh, review complete, we now have a draft resolution twenty-three dash zero five B for the, um, it's sort of like application. Again, whatever motion we can ensure, I'm glad we can have some of the discussions that we had here today. With that said, do I have a motion? Someone wants to make a motion? Yeah, I'll make a motion to, uh, you know, move the resolution forward as written, noting that the, uh, application did go to shipo for review, but could not be completed in time due to the software issue, as well as that the, uh, repair was designated emergency due to, uh, the leaks in the roof that were getting inside the structure. That motion is up second.
I'm second. I'm trying to caption the whole motion. Barely agree.
Yeah.
And I, I've got your motion, Harley, second, but I'm trying to.
Yeah.
It's, uh, the, the motion, the board accepts the resolution as written, noting that applicant, application submitted to review for shipo, though there was a software issue.
That, uh, prevented a response from arriving before immediate date. As well as the emergency repair designation. For, uh, leaks getting inside the structure. Voca.
Jim Adella?
Yes.
Abby Leesner-Burt?
Yes.
Tom Cosgrove?
Yes.
Harley Leary?
Yes.
Sarah Stanfett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Thank you so much.
Glad you were able to get it repaired and done before the winter falls down, especially for this, this, this last winter.
Thank you so much.
I agree.
And, um, Leah, I will try to prepare, um, final, um, letter or note and, um, a copy of the rest to come back to you as soon as possible, but it's given, um, tomorrow's Thursday and see how it will be posted on Friday.
It's your turn. Everything, I'll get it approved by Friday.
More important, you got the roof.
Yes. Thank you so much. You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice time.
You too.
Okay, moving on to application number two, Slender Application twenty-three dash zero six. As I indicated in the, in the pre-meeting, uh, I will myself with this application, uh, given that for my part of the EDA, which is the, uh, chair director. Uh, with that said, Abby graciously taking over the chair and Andrew will be stepping in.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Alicia, would you please give this a second?
Sure. Thank you. So for item number two, twenty-three dash zero six, New Way Car Wash Modification, twenty-twenty-three Site Plan Review. This request is to modify a previously approved site plan, thereby changing the site circulation, location of parking spaces in impervious area. The site is located at three twenty-one Cornelia Street. The parcel ID number is two zero point one seven dash two dash twelve. It is zone B two. The owner and applicant, um, is Park Car Pros Inc., um, and Harry Buck is the assigned representative who is here with us this evening. The applicant is New Way Car Wash and the command per is Mike Moon, he keeps A D A P C, and he is here with us as well this evening. Um, here is, um, the start location. It is the apartment location of the car wash and parcel within the B two zone district, and you'll see the R one zone district directly south of that. Here is a closer shot of the parcel itself. Um, this is an older aerial image of it. So this is not what the site looks like today. It's preconstruction. But showing the location along the Cornelia Street. And here is, uh, a more, uh, current photo of the site. This is looking at the main entrance, um, and in southern view, um, which shows, um, sidewalk striping, um, two different lanes uh, to exit the property, one lane entering into the property. See some of the, uh, parking, um, delineation, um, and the, um, halfway completed building. It looks like they still have a site and some detail work to do. Um, this is probably about a month and a half, two months, we'll know. This is a snapshot of the, uh, twenty-twenty-one approved site plan. Um, I'll just rest here for a little bit for you to digest where the open space. The, the fifteen, uh, car, uh, queue lane is the building footprint, um, existing parking, turn lanes to exit, and, um, the entrance. And then flipping over, this is what has most, uh, recently been submitted to us. Um, on the left is the approved twenty-twenty plan, um, provided for comparison's sake. And then on the right is the partial as built of what has been completed to date and suggested modified site plan. And then, um, here is a short certain look at that modified site plan. So for the twenty-twenty-three plan modifications, the proposal is, um, relocating parking stalls from the northeast portion of the building to the four, essentially the four corners of the site. Reduction in open space, um, though I do want to note that open space requirements will still be met, even though it's been reduced. The second story of the building, there was initially a second story planned, um, that was going to be dedicated for office space. The second story has been eliminated and then the office space area has been reduced from a thousand square feet to three hundred square feet. There are still items that have not been completed that were part of the twenty-twenty-one site plan approval. And these are installation of the landscape planning, grass restoration, installation of the fence along the southernly and southeastally batteries, and installation of the new panel sign. So in summary, um, for department review comments, DPW inspired department had no concerns. And no other responses were received from other departments. First, planning staff review, um, we have comments one through nine. Nine is cut off on the screen. Um, I can try and toggle up maybe. But, um, one through nine, number one is a concern about snow storage, that it, there's no, um, depiction of snow, where snow storage will be on site, um, um, or, um, noted on the plan. Concerns about maneuverability around stalls number two and three by recent delivery vehicles. Comment number three is a consideration of redesigning, um, for the entrance to provide a greater buffer to parking stall number two. Parking stall number two is the proposed stall at the northwest corner of the lot, just south of the group, the open space area as you enter onto the site. And to note here, ZBA variance, um, uh, did approve, uh, to allow a wider width to accommodate the two directional, um, turn lane at, at, at the exit. Comment number four, um, the turnaround maneuverability for deliveries, refuse, and removal, as well as emergency vehicle access is a concern. The plan does, the, um, and the supplemental materials provided on the stackers, seven, um, did provide maneuverability plans, um, but those were for an F one fifty super cab eight foot blast truck. And it's, so it's not been determined if the turn radius would match that of the typical, more typical delivery truck, uh, or emergency vehicle. Number five, concerns with on-site refuse management and collection. Again, this kind of goes back to the maneuverability. The, the applicant had, um, proposed an operational plan where refuse would be called up by a, an F one fifty light truck to their, um, satellite, um, car wash, um, in another location within the city. Number six is concerns with the vegetation along the southern boundary and impacts by the parking stalls number three and four, where the vegetation buffer was a condition of approval with twenty-twenty-one site plan. Number seven is, um, clarification of striping delineated or between the building and the station line and topology. And I believe, I just have to double check my notes, the applicant, um, uh, the, um, in the staff report, it's, um, stated that the board should consider, that the staff recommends that the board should consider such a date limited condition of approval by which the site nature must be added prior to the receipt of final certification of the law contingency. Number eight, um, is stating, um, an update to the site plan comment regarding the sidewalk. And actually, this has, has been completed, um, just a, a spot of, of the presentation. Well, twenty-three, the staff did note that the applicant appears to have addressed this comment in full. And then number nine is that a floor plan should be provided, um, to show where the office space will be located in the middle of the park, that it will be held at three hundred square feet.
Thank you.
And that's it for my presentation.
Alicia, do you typically take any clarifying questions from the board at this time on the presentation?
Those questions should actually be technically be held for the public.
Sounds good.
But if you need me to go back and forth to show pictures, um, or, um, clarify questions as to what staff has received or what was previously approved, I can, I can answer those questions.
We can do that during our conference discussion.
Okay.
Question. All right, um, so I believe the applicants are present. Would you like an opportunity to share your comments?
Sure. My name is Michael Kuhn. I'm with the EDA and, uh, as Alicia narrated, we had received the original staff comments last month and we were not in front of the board, but we did prepare a response and update the information. So that's the, the drawing that she had presented. I guess if you wouldn't mind, I can go through the staff comments since that's sort of the focus and then kind of give you my summary. Where we were two years ago when we created the site design and then, and then how it's somewhat changed today. Alicia, you are going to the drawing that's the side by sides.
Sure.
So just as a brief overview, the, uh, what precipitated the changes that?
I'm trying to stand up for you.
What precipitated the changes that you see between the two is when we designed the site in twenty-twenty-one and went from the TBA, the county planning board, and the district planning board, um, the building at that time was the concept. And then as things evolved, the building got designed and, uh, the applicant started construction last summer after a delay due to COVID and everything had looked like that. So he decided not to do this second story supplemental office space.
Would you like that one to start?
No, I just like waving my hands.
They have one.
So in, in, in kind of designing the building, the one, other than the production of the office space, the fundamental change was that due to the layout of the car wash equipment, the tunnel, which is defined as with the push you drive through, so where the overhead doors are, the inlet and the outlet, it shifted over two feet. And as you can see up on the original design, the employee parking spaces were basically from the property line just to the start of that exit drive. So by shifting the overhead door two feet, it didn't leave enough space for the parking spaces. And the applicant, uh, chose to relocate the four spaces to areas on the site that he felt would be out of the way. And then, uh, at the time, um, as far as the building plan goes, what he submitted to the co's office and got the building per for is what he built with three hundred square feet of office space. So that is unfiled with the city building department. And the applicant did confer with the building department throughout for the normal inspections and whatnot. And they did run the question of changing the pavement around a little bit to relocate those parking spaces. I don't want to put words into anyone's mouth, but at the time, he was, he was informed it wouldn't be a fundamental difference in terms of the function and therefore it should be okay. Fast forward to now, uh, before the end of the year, he's trying to open up with a temporary certificate of occupancy to start his business in the twenty-twenty-three calendar. And in those conversations for the certificate of occupancy inspections, it triggered coming back in front of the board to review what's changed. So really, as far as the site function and layout, the, the main thing that, and as Alicia narrated, is it's the relocation of the four parking spaces, uh, which does change the back of the site slightly in terms of putting parking spaces closer to the rear fence line and the vegetated buffer. Other than that, from a design standpoint, I don't feel like there was any, uh, wholesale changes that changed the intent of what the board originally approved. So that's sort of the background of how we got to where we are today. In terms of snow storage, uh, this was reviewed at the first original approval of planning board. The Samoyan Mr. Buck operates at Margaret Street, still, uh, Margaret Street Car Wash is during snow events, he shuts down. He comes in with a truck and a trailer and a loader and loads the snow and takes it to a private property he owns elsewhere. As you can imagine, the nature of this business, piles of snow melting with road salt doesn't help. His customers coming in to get cleaned, so clearing it off the site and keeping his site snow free and ice free and salt free is, is in his business model. So, um, with that, we haven't really changed anything in that regard that still is objective. The green space was never intended as a snow storage space. It was really meant just to create buffers to the neighboring users. Maneuverability, maneuverability of parking spaces two and three. We did present in last month's submission maneuvering plans. As Alicia pointed out, it was for a full-size pickup truck with an eight-foot box. That's what Mr. Buck operates. And so that's what we used as sort of the anticipated design vehicle. The question was raised regarding, well, kind of jumping ahead, but these are all kind of tied together in terms of deliveries and refuse vehicles. His Margaret Street Car Wash is the basis of their operation, so they get deliveries of their soaps, waxes, all that. Those are very dispensable items. So, uh, the, their operating plan is that those would be delivered daily, weekly, however, that they have asked them to use it by his staff, so there wouldn't be box trucks, tractor trailers, anything like that coming up the site. I do understand the conversation with his planning office. There's always the inevitable, what if he sells a property in another business and somebody doesn't have that same operation model. I did essentially have an illustration. This is the design vehicle in the program we use that runs the turning patterns and everything. So a full-length, uh, pickup truck is roughly twenty-one feet long and has a turning radius of curve to curve. So that's if you're with a donut from outside to outside, uh, a turning radius of twenty-six feet. Here is your standard FedEx or UPS truck, if that was the alternate for anyone else operating on the site. It's roughly twenty-three feet long, so a foot and a half longer. Its turning radius is twenty-three point three feet, so it's actually shorter and tighter than a full-size pickup truck. With that in mind, any anticipated vehicles that would in theory come to drop off or pick up, whether it's Mr. Buck's staff or, uh, common carrier, could pull into the front and offload his front door on the front right-hand side, offload and then back up and pull out. His staff would be coming generally before they open, so that's when they would be bringing materials for, for filling up the machines. A race, it's all going to be roughly five gallon jugs and those are all probably recyclable. So he would be leaving with them as they bring new stuff and leave with the old and take them to the Margaret Street. So as far as employee parking, uh, refuse and deliveries, that's all how the, the operations would be proceeding. The driveway entrance, while we understand the conversation at hand of if you made changes, would it free up other areas for parking? This is a conversation, the original planning board meeting and zoning board meeting. At the time, the, the primary concern wasn't so much parking, it was vehicles leaving the car wash, exiting, you know, because of the city, most people are going to be turning right, but, um, you know, plenty of people may want to turn left also. I've been on the site since he's been building it and my office is in West Plaques, so I've always turned left. I've been on the site since he's been building it and my office is in West Plaques, so I've always turned left. So the key was to get independent right-hand and left-hand turns, so you're not causing any delays. Now, there is safety within the equipment itself. If a vehicle doesn't leave the exit door, it stops the other vehicles coming through the car wash. So there are safeguards in place. But from day one through the other board approvals, we got it was always the desired situation to have right-hand and left-hand. So at this time, we do not wish to revisit a layout of the driveway curb cut to change the parking. And so I touched on the delivery vehicle and waste delivery vehicle. The vegetation, so that's sort of the one area that I see is impacted by the revised layout. That said, the goal was for sound attenuation for the residential properties adjoining. We feel a 10-foot vinyl fence is going to be a pretty significant screen. And then we do still have a cluster of the approved number of evergreen trees to go in along the fence. Noting, the majority of the noise created by the car wash is on the exit side where the drivers are going. So that's all going towards the Cornelia Street side. So on the back side, it's really idling vehicles that would be the noise generators. At the original approval, we did do a noise study. We went out with a noise meter, measured ambient noise levels at the back of the site, at the middle of the site, and at the front of the site. As you can imagine, Cornelia Street is the primary noise source out there. From the back of the site, it was still Cornelia Street. The rooftop exhaust on Codo next door make a term of on the noise. Then I went to the Margaret Street store and did the same noise readings with the car wash in operation with vehicles in it. And the readings were almost identical. So the noise study that we prepared as part of the original approval really showed that there would be no fundamental change. But the fence and the evergreens, which is viewed as good safeguards. So I feel that we still provide the intent of that despite the two parking spaces being closer to the property line. And then the delineator between the buildings. So as you can see, this is the striping that is currently on site right now. This is just a first course of asphalt, given that he was building this in the late fall. He put down the first course of asphalt in the spring. When the plant opens up again, he'll have the top course of asphalt put on. And then the permanent striping can be applied. And we would, you know, he can stick to the intent of the original design. So right now, he just did the basics. And he also added in, you can see, we indicated the arrows of wash lane. So there is some additional striping on there to help with circulation as customers get used to the new operation there.
Is that, there's nothing going there though, in that area? It's just being striped?
Yeah, so like this hatching?
Yes.
This was also be striped to indicate to drivers that it's not a car wash lane or that it's the outside lane. The intent of this is should someone come in here, realize their truck's too high to fit in the door or they have emergency, they have to leave, the staff can arrange for a car to exit through that way.
Okay. And like even maybe the people in those, the staff in those parking spots closer to the fence, they could also leave in that way or would they, in the, we have the
Oh, that's correct. Yes. So this is always an exit way for staff if they were parked back there. So that's the intent of this whole throughway. You know, there will be the automated entry system, but there will be typically about two staff on hand to help with it.
I was going to clarify, how many staff are actually planned to?
Two.
And you answered my question too about why not just put the parking spaces there, what you're saying. It's a basic emergency driveline. And then there's no curb or anything like that. It's just, it's just marking delineators. There's no curving along that driveline anywhere.
Well, this is raised.
That, right.
Yes.
Yes, that's raised. And then is the oil water separator raised as well?
So that's the oil water separator. No, it's raised right now without that top of the asphalt. But once it's paved, it'll be smooth surface.
Okay.
And then the final comment was regarding the sidewalks. So we revised the original notes or a carryover from the original one. At that time, the idea was there that the town and the city were coordinating with DOT for pedestrian improvements. It's my understanding that's progressed a little bit. So we updated the note of the plan that ultimately, you know, what we had shown for sidewalk will be incorporated in according to street pedestrian improvements. In the meantime, Perry did pave and put the crosswalks that you saw in the pictures just to make sure it's as safe as possible for people until it's elected. So that's generally my summary of what we've done today. Certainly open any questions?
Yeah, thank you. So you have further questions? Now, Alicia, can you go back up to the picture, what it looks like, most recent picture? Yeah.
And there's currently no, there's no fence back there right now, but you're saying you're going to add a 10-foot vinyl fence?
There's a pre-existing fence. It's a wood fence. It's roughly six feet high.
Okay. And that would essentially extend the length of the property in the, in the back side there.
Yeah, it's going to go from back corner to back corner. And along the back Codo, the parking lot that joins Codo, it's going to be a smaller fence, I think, I think it's six feet. And that will come roughly to towards the middle.
Yeah, like what's behind Codo? What do they have?
There's a parking lot back there.
Yeah, but like, do they have a fence?
Uh, there's a big cedar hedge.
Okay. It looks like there's pretty tall vegetation all along that back property line.
Yeah, there's trees on the property that
On the residential property. So nobody's looking up their second story and being no way to
Correct. The closest house would be these ones over here, but they've also got that big hedge in front of Codo.
Did you took noise readings in the, I don't know, in the front, back, in the middle, or in the other areas? I don't know, decibel readings anywhere in there? I get what you're saying. You have just like a ballpark.
Yeah, I
That's my only real concern was saying, all right, well, if you're going to move idling vehicles from the front to the back of the site. But I, I don't know, if you're going to have fencing and have a vegetation there, I completely agree with you that it's probably way noisier just if cars traveling on Cornelia Street.
Yeah.
Like the vehicles that be.
So the ambient readings here, when it was the parking lot that forwarded these, the along the sidewalk area of the road, it ranged between 74 and 78 decibels. Midpoint of the lot, it was 64 to 70. And at the back fence line, standing against the wooden fence, it was 55 to 60. And then when I went to the Margaret Street facility, standing near the exit side of the building, so the door that we're looking at, it was 77 to 79 decibels, so very similar to what it currently is right at the street. And then standing behind the car wash, it was 64 to 69. And that was like one of the doors, so it would be very similar to the ambient of the
Okay. Yeah, I know really, you address that concern and that was addressed, I think, by the previous planning board as well. Like noise levels for the adjoining property owners, but it's not really going to be bouncing against that area, so.
Is, is, um, is the applicant interested in continuing to have four parking spaces if only two are required?
Yeah, I mean, I can't get to that part of it, but the intent would be yes, but I don't know.
I mean, we would like to keep them?
Yeah. I didn't know if it was just to be the requirement kind of thing or it is in your interest to maintain those.
I think it would be, I think it would be far people would have so much to park.
Bring up more of that front area.
Right, to keep their vehicles more in the back of the site than in the front of the site.
Yeah, because there's some street parking or anything around here.
I just, I don't know, just a little side note. I mean, the reason we didn't do the office space up front was I decided to keep my office down on Margaret Street.
Oh, your original plan was to
I was
Before we get further into our discussion, confirm during the questions to the applicants. Okay, well, thank you very much for your detailed responses. It's helpful. All right, we have a public hearing. All right, so I guess we'll move to open the public hearing. Any comments from the person? Anyone online? You don't do online, you said?
No, nobody online at the public hearing.
Okay. Then we'll go to public hearing. Move to public hearing. All right, so we can just open up some more of our discussion with the most of the board. Alicia, I wanted to clarify something. With the landscaping buffer space being a provision of the variance, correct? If that is now, for you to clarify, that was?
It was a provision of the 2021 site line.
Of the site line approval?
So it was a condition of
Okay, but so we are, are we held to maintain that at this stage?
Well, this is a modification.
Right.
And so it's up to the board if they want to allow
Yeah.
this portion to
Okay, but there's nothing prohibiting us from changing the board's say. Do you show the Okay.
And any other, I guess, downstream effects from that either, right? Because the kickback to any of the other, who would kick it back to the CBA or the county CBA or the ZO for that anywhere?
No, it shouldn't, but just to be sure, we can go back to the variance approvals. I don't have all of the, the entire list of variances that were requested and provided, um, standardized.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
I think we're just going back to those. And that's at the beginning of the staff report. I don't
Yeah, I guess I'm just, because this has such an extensive history with several boards already and that applicant has gone through that process, I just want to make sure that if we are going to make that approval, that it's not restarting them on their journey through the process.
Actually, in your applicant application
Can I ask for a clarification of that?
Yeah, sure.
So on our site plan, we indicated the variance is achieved. So the first variance was from Schedule 2, no side yard is required. But if one is provided, it shall be a minimum of 12 feet. So we have a four-foot side yard setback, so we got relief from that. The second was from Chapter 360 dash 25 point B point 1. Project used shall not be closer than 200 feet to our district. So we got relief from that as we directly above the R1 description. And the third variance was from Chapter 360 dash 16 point E point 1. That curb cut shall be limited in width to 60% of the total lot coverage and maximum width of single drive shall be 30 feet. So we got relief from that for a 66-foot lot width allows a 39.6-foot curb cut while we proposed 40.2. And the proposed drive width is 33.5 feet. So that's what the zoning board authorized variance is from. So none of, you know, what we discussed
Legislation was not a
affects that.
Yeah.
Um, then there was a special use permit for the automobile service slash agencies in the B2 district and also for the fence exceeding eight feet. So that from the get-go was a conversation from our sketch plan review to desire the desired height of 10 feet to help buffer. So when we went through the CBA process, that was a special use permit. Yeah. Now, the vegetation, the evergreens was one of the conditions of approval from the planning board in August of 2021. And it was stated, the applicant shall include evergreens or other vegetation abutting the southerly neighbor in addition to the 10-foot fence as a method to mitigate noise generating by development.
Okay, that's helpful for drawing my attention to those three on the front.
Yeah, thank you.
So since the planning board previously required better greens, that would be up to us if we still require that. Or allow that maybe to be modified.
And we're still proposing the same number of evergreens as originally approved. It's just now it won't be in the two spaces where the parking space comes up to the fence. So they'll be still in that vicinity, just shifted it.
This is a discussion, right?
Yeah, yeah, because they're
I feel like they checked all the boxes that we need, that they need to check. I know there's a little bit of change. But he did the sound testing and 10-foot fence. I feel like they met the needs a little bit.
Yeah, and you said, sorry, do you want to ask some more questions? Um, doing a little Well, okay, he had said that the owner is the one who does the plowing. So I think that also will ensure that if you sometimes hire outside people to do that, they'll run over vegetation that's still growing. So I think we can assume that he's not supposed to run over vegetation. I think he's going to fix himself.
Yeah, I think, um, I think in addressing the, like in the staff report, the concern about kind of just maneuverability on the front end, if there are two staff, then you maintain the back parking spaces. That does just kind of open up the front more just for
Yeah.
maneuverability of any traffic coming in or dropping off during the day when they do have a queue. So I, and yeah, and maintaining those back parking stalls doesn't, doesn't seem to have, seeing that site photo with the vegetation existing and adding the fence, I'm not as concerned as I was initially when considering this, that there'd be houses right there down or something. So
Yeah, you focus out like you'd see a
Yeah. So I feel like some of the, initially I was thinking would just get rid of those back two, but I actually think it makes sense to keep those for parking. And then, in fact, then it would be less congested and there'd be more opening sightlines on the front where you would have maybe people walking in and would improve safety and maneuverability. Which I think are kind of some of the underlying concerns in access.
And that's for like the maneuverability as well. It's not like they're going to be doing any sort of delivery type or anything with a big truck during busy hours. And we're going to be doing that on a full queue.
And the striping delineator is being added when it's complete. There's a complete sidewalk that will be added.
Do you have to put it together on a date for a, just a lock in city?
No, the planning board does not assign a date. Once the planning board makes the commission and resolutions, then that information will get passed out to the local department and then all the continuing conversations.
So we are saying, you know, the board should consider a specific date limit condition by which they need to add the striping, right?
Yes.
Which should probably be in a couple of months when the asphalt plant's open?
You know, it's like May, April, like spring, yeah. I know, in winter, June. Do we strike it?
Yeah, so the asphalt plant usually opens around April 15.
April, yeah, okay.
It's going to be like just based on the weather.
Right.
Yeah, you won't, you won't want to make a condition of like April 15 because the plant won't be open and then you could set it to the right side. Snow the last three days.
Does it make sense like the end of June or would you tie to a final certificate of ownership?
So the plant opens
I understand, I know there's a run on that.
Everybody's, yeah, right, so it's lined up, right, so.
If I'm understanding right, we're not saying anything about the certificate of occupancy. The certificate of occupancy is going to come after all the work gets done, which would include the striping. And we should just say, make sure you do the striping in point one.
You could, that could be. Yep, that could be a condition. And the, the building department is willing to give offer a temporary certificate of occupancy. And we hold the final until everything is completed. And she also has the understanding that not everything can be completed now regardless of whether it's the money or. Because the lumbering is important.
Doesn't the temporary, doesn't it have like a shelf life, sort of one year or something?
Um, yeah, typically there is a timeframe assigned to that.
If we get it done before it's not done, then you have to go back anyways.
And if I could ask you all before we get to the department to the motion and resolution for, for this, could we just uncover the seeker portion of that?
Yep.
And then, and then we could get.
I guess the only other thought that I had from this that Alicia, you may have more knowledge on this than we do. There's proposed work from a DOT project in 2025, if I'm right?
There's, so Cornelius, the Cornelian Broad Street intersection is being examined currently with, by DOT.
Okay.
It's a DOT funded project. It's currently under preliminary design, but not expected to actually make it to construction if all goes well until approximately 2026.
Okay.
So that would be in the sidewalk in front of this location and adjacent sidewalks. But what would become the, the vote on that?
But it would potentially extend back that far around the Cornelian Broad?
Yes, yeah. The, the scope of the project goes all the way essentially to the town, city, town.
Potentially, okay.
A whole side of the street.
And who's, who's responsible to put the sidewalk there?
That would be, um, if all goes well with the project, it would be part of the DOT.
The DOT, okay. So I guess what's, what's the like, do we know how far back that would potentially extend? How many of those plannings that he's going to put in, in this spring are going to get torn up in three years? I guess, I'm proud of that.
Uh, in the northern portion of the site, that we do not know. That's a complete unknown.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, we don't know what the limits of the construction will be.
Yeah, all right, okay.
Any, any other thoughts from the members of the board? So, uh, let's see here. We do have a draft seeker resolution 23 dash zero six A. We should, do you want to read quickly?
Sure. So, um, so part two of the environmental assessment form provides the part one that the applicant submitted and was previously accepted by the planning board for the 2021 site plan application. And again, with this part two, all the sort of screw following for two directions, one through 11 are based, are based using the information contained in part one and other issues submitted by the product sponsor or otherwise the real world to review or may get to the question. We are guided by the concept, have my responses been reasonably considered reasonable and context of the proposed action? So there's two answers, no or small impact may occur. So if they don't hear anything, any of that, I will assume that is your answer. The second answer could be moderate to large impact may occur. So, um, starting one through 11, will the proposed action create an internal conflict with an adopted land use or zoning regulation? Will the proposed action result in a change in the use of or intensity of land use? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of existing community? Will the proposed action have an impact on the environment, environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? Will the proposed action result in an ever exchange in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit by gain for wantability? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Will the proposed action impact existing A, public private water supplies or B, public private wastewater treatment utilities? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historical, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? For example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, or fauna? Will the proposed action result in an increase in potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or? All checked to no, therefore, um, there is no, have heard of environmental.
Okay. So no impact for part one and two. We have a draft resolution, someone make the motion.
I make the motion to approve the seeker.
Second?
What's second?
We'll call.
Um, James Adella, Christine. Abby Meeser, Bert. Yes, Daisy. Uh, Tom Cosgrove?
Yes.
Are they there?
Yes.
Andrew Keston?
Yes.
Sarah Stanford?
Yes.
Good. So adopted. So, uh, I feel we're at a position where we, someone would feel comfortable making a motion for the detailed preliminary, preliminary plan, for the draft detailed preliminary plan resolution 23 dash zero six B. And so, um, we should probably have some comments or conditions that we go with it. Based on our discussion.
And if I can interject.
Who's that?
Normally staff doesn't interject, but this is just a, an operational request. Is when the motion is made, if referred to comments, staff comments one through nine. And if there's an amendment to that, stick with the amendment.
Got it.
Something, do we do the yell or what?
Here we go, yeah, there you go. All right. Um, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 23 dash zero six B, uh, including the staff comments, one through nine. Uh, with a note, I'm sure I'm going to miss some of these, so please, if anybody from the board catches any of that, please interject, but. Yeah, just including the condition of, uh, let's go, staff comment seven, that the striping delineators be added by the last board.
Sorry, can I ask you a clarifying question? Would you say, like, include the staff comments? Is that saying that we are including all of these as something they have to complete? I think we have to clear, I think we have to clarify. Okay, okay. So right now Tom was saying, um, we think, we need to include seven of it.
Yeah.
And then we get to address the others.
Address the others kind of as they, as they go. Yeah, and I feel like many of the others were addressed and based on staff, you know, based on planning or discussion, I don't think we missed.
About the consent.
And, right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, statement of explanation's on there.
Um, Tom, could you repeat that date for me, July seventh?
Uh, July, July fourth.
Fourth.
Twenty nineteen.
Fourth.
I don't know if that's a major issue for this, your contract, your contractors on this.
We're just talking about the striping.
Just the striping on the, yeah.
Where, where the park could be left out down the side of the building? Like, correct.
Yeah, let me just read the staff comments. So readding the striping delineator that has been removed between the buildings or pay station.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, right, so that would be the, I believe, that's sort of the deter, based on your comments, that's sort of to deter people from using that as anything other than a temporary drive-through space?
An exit way.
An exit way, which I believe is the purpose of the staff comments. Yeah. Yeah. If that's a too fast concern, I guess, if that's something that is. I don't know, timing, timing wise, based on what you're lining up for your contractors, based on when the plant opens and those kinds of things.
You're not saying we have to put the top coat on by the, you're saying we just need to get that temporary striping down and then we'll be repaid or we can re-strike it later.
Yeah, I guess, I don't know how fast you're trying to put that top coat in. Are you trying to get it in by?
I talked to order and black out, they're, they're already scheduling it, they're all, you know.
They're already scheduling it, they're all, okay.
We're on their list.
Okay.
So it sounds like temporary should go in before.
So it sounds like temporary should probably, yeah.
Exactly, whatever I do with that.
Yeah.
So that may be an early.
So it's temporary, it's warmer than painted.
Yeah, okay.
Since July fourth is.
I think so. Uh, all right, what am I missing? So storage we discussed, I think that was addressed, maneuverability. Yeah, also addressed redesigning the entrance. I think that's been addressed, we talked about the maneuverability.
Noise.
The noise that's been addressed.
Noise is number four?
Sorry, yeah, so just to keep going, we're, uh, I think three's been addressed, four's been addressed, five as well. Six, again, I think it's been addressed. We talked that there's no major issues with that, considering there's no change in vegetation. Talked about.
As long as they maintain the same amount of vegetation distributed.
You got it here.
Yeah, so all right, let me put that in, and we'll get back to it then.
Do you want to add?
Yeah, so maybe, let's do that now, for the condition, I guess, sure.
Number six.
Yeah, uh, so again, it would be approving the draft resolution along with the, keeping of the original approval with the same amount of vegetation installed from previous application in that narrow, narrowed area.
With same amount of vegetation installed?
Vegetation installed on the southern.
But was it like, like, when you say amount, was there an amount in the first approval?
Look, whatever, so.
Yeah, sure, maybe that's a better way of putting it.
Which they did.
Depicted on the original site.
Depicted on the original site, thank you.
Not that I try to put words in there.
No, thank you, I, I'm failing to find that, because you're finding the words.
So yeah, they, they took what they originally had, just redistributed it.
Okay.
Redistributed it.
Yeah, I just didn't want to say like an amount if there wasn't been that.
So, it's a really big number, it's a really big number, so yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and there wasn't an amount, the condition is clear that it did.
Yeah, so then by the approved plan, it's a good note for that. Okay, and I don't think we need to address comment eight. Do you still feel that we need comment nine, the staff planning? Uh, that's the office space?
Um, that's up to the board. It was a staff recommendation that a floor plan be provided. But I did hear the applicant state to the board that that information has been supplied. It sounds like it has been supplied to the building department. And it's part of the approval permit, which the site improvements are common to allow with. Is what I heard, so it's up to the board, if you want to clarify.
I think if, if the funding staff wants a site, a, a building plan, it would be, you know, just to cover the segment.
Yeah, exactly, so I don't feel like we need to address that.
Yeah, that would be up to the board and, um, for the planning staff. If, if that additional information is needed and the board doesn't require it, we can call down to you.
All right, all right, I'm not going to bore you. So I think I, uh, we addressed comments six, six, six and seven, which were the primary concerns. So those would be, I think, the, the approval in the motion with those two conditions.
Okay.
And if I was talking, I'm all over the place there, so.
No, you did a fantastic job, I really appreciate it. And I can repeat that. If you would like me to.
Interested in getting everyone home with their families, I think. Uh, unless anyone from the board, you don't need to either.
Sounds good.
Okay, so we had Tom make a motion.
Seven.
A couple of conditions, notify Alicia, and we have Andrew second. Wait, both of you? It's okay, you're, you're doing three jobs right now.
That was me figuring it out. This is fun though. What else do you get here? So James Adella has refused himself. Um, Rick Perry, absent. Abby Meeser, Meeser, Bert?
Yes.
Tom Cosgrove?
Yes.
Are they there?
Yes.
Sarah Stanford?
Yes.
And Andrew Keston?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate your time, and I'll take that too.
No, that's Jim. Should I grab a jam?
Yeah.
Thank you for guiding us through that and for.
Yes, that's, that's.
Motion's going.
There was a lot of information there.
Two years ago, that was very scary. Everybody stayed like, it was just.
Like you're feeling, feeling.
Get the people home. So.
No, I'll take that, I'll just take care of that, thank you.
So remaining on the agenda, we have other business. Uh, we have a draft 2024, 24 calendar. Staff, have anything else?
On the planning board calendar?
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's kind of typical, we roll all of the current year's dates forward to line up the, the regular, the schedule meetings. We try to line those dates up within one day. We're highlighted, that's, that's an off date, and so we, that's a Friday. For instance, um, uh, it's middle date, so it's middle date, twenty, uh, December 21st, 2023. I mean, it's middle dates are supposed to land on Fridays, and that actually lines on Thursday because all, um, city offices are closed this Friday. And then the 28th, uh, it's not a Friday. I'll look down to figure out when it is. Tuesday. There you go, Tuesday. Um, and, um, we have aligned this, actually, far much least with the majority of the work into this, but aligned it with the zoning board calendar as well as having a planning board to ensure that we have our update in. Um, so we have a whole function calendar next year. So if you see, if, if any can stand up to you, let us know. And then you can use this to make your arrangements next year. And, you know, I don't, everybody's pretty, pretty great at communicating back to staff, but if there are specific dates and you know you're going to be away on vacation or have other obligations that we do away with the planning board, just, you can let us know and we'll try and track that through the year.
They don't have comment on late, it's, that December 23rd. They, like, that's a Monday, a weekend where people might travel for Christmas.
That's maybe the same.
We might not have a full board. I don't know, you guys, where you go for Christmas or not, but.
Yeah, it's like a trip.
It's a very good thing on the weekend. Yeah.
I would imagine that staff would be too, from like the week prior and those kinds of things. So I don't know if it's possible to bump that up. And, but November 25th is probably the same week as Thanksgiving, which would probably run into, my guess is runs into the same concern.
Yeah. From a board standpoint, you have suggested an. From a board standpoint, you have suggested an alternate suggestion for the November twenty-fifth?
So the real question, I think, comes down to the zoning board meets on the third Tuesday, it still looks like. So they have the third Tuesday, so we can't just roll it back to the third Monday. Typically, we go after the zoning board in the, in the review process.
I'm sorry, you're talking about November or December?
Yeah, just in general, just in general. But then, then, I think the other big thing is understanding what the common council sessions are. So the, yeah, we have a place.
Yeah, um, and typically, I mean, I would expect that the, the new common council calendar And those calendars point to near what they happen to be. So typically, Friday, Thursday, these days are occupied and on occasion, yeah, Monday on occasion.
I would think honestly, given the amount of effort that Barbara Schulze put into this and trying to coordinate with all the other calendars, I would recommend we go with this calendar at the moment, and then once all, everybody else's official calendars come out, we can adjust, we'll adjust.
Yeah. I live pretty local, so I haven't found the twenty-third, it just seems like a hard thing for people to make.
Yeah, I guess that was really my one concern too, is if both of those are within those holiday weeks, you're either gonna get a lot of absences or maybe deferrals from folks. I guess it's also not in the main construction calendar, so then we might get more like we got tonight, people who already completed the work.
And with that said, honestly, December is always turned into this regardless. Try to pick the dates early and then act the board doesn't seem able to come, or honestly, we don't pack vacations and it gets canceled anyway and stuff, so Again, just not knowing the answers to some of those other coordination questions that, for example, with Barbara Schulze working on that work now.
Yeah.
I think we just go with this for now, and we have to, if we did adjust, it does. Then we'll have better schedules in the future.
Sure.
Yeah.
That would be my thought.
Um, but noted, I will double check the November twenty-fifth and December twenty-third in weeks and see if there is any The program.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've been five days.
So Thanksgiving's the twenty-fifth, that's Thursday. Unless schools are off, that's only projected on the big with me. I think the twenty-fifth isn't as big with you, I think it's the twenty-third of December that's more tricky.
Sure, yeah.
Right.
Then
So we could look at it, I would say the week before that would be in a clearer zone. Um, that would shorten that month, um, and I believe, in, in the past, a lot of December meetings have been postponed. Who knows what it will bring.
So in this case, what we can do is, uh, move to the store tonight. This will allow staff to publish the calendar for the new year, so that people can prepare. And then, you know, if we have better information in the first meeting in January, we can re-establish December if that's appropriate, November two. Perfect. Now we have status updates by staff.
Yeah, uh, so, uh, Jim Abdullah, I'd say we appointment to another term. Woo! So congratulations to him, and thank you for offering another review decision. Um, we got to, uh, don't call me that. Um, and
Not a lifetime appointment.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure. I appreciate the opportunity and honestly, I'm sure we've heard of councils and mayors and just appreciate the confidence, opportunity.
Yeah, well, your dedication, I truly appreciate it, everybody's dedication. Understood, it's not, it's, um, it is, you know, it's a time commitment and There's a brain teaser involved, um, in this permanent situation taking, so all of your time to contribute. Um, and with that appointment stated, just a reminder to you to meet up with Sylvia in the first office to review her work.
Thank you.
Um, and then in other news, Courtney Meidenheimer has been moved up from her previous position As the city's community engagement coordinator to our new, um, community development director, um, since the departure of nothing more. So that's exciting news, um, she has an ambitious agenda and, um, has a lot of energy in Items for it. So are you, is that the current, or you're I'm actually, uh, no, not directly, I work very closely with that department, um, they're a team extension of me. Um, I'm actually directly under the mayor's office, um, I'm kind of under the mayor's office. But Schulze is under the community development office, um, and it, it's a funny situation Because of the way civil service and reunion rules apply. Um, so Schulze and I, though, we're split up between who we report to, we work in a team To deliver planning board items and other planning tasks. Okay.
Just to clarify, I'm, I'm asking questions as well here, I think that Role that we don't understand exactly all these items, but, um, The board and a budget of the board that is technically underneath the development office, correct?
And That is a good question to ask, and the first part of that question, I, I'd have to double check Because it is confusing, the way it is laid out in the code and job descriptions. So, um, and, and just legitimately. Um, but that said, um, the budget does definitely lie within the government department. All budget, budget items, budget monies that I am associated with go through the community development.
So would we, um, for instance, when we need third-party review, That, um, after even budgetary, you know, monetary responsibilities of the applicant and coordinationcy goes through that department?
Um, the, right, it goes through me to whatever staff member would be assisting me. So typically, that would be, Schulze is a staff member currently, the planning assistant, and then the monies would be requested from the community development department. So, over. Cover it.
We'll check with third-party services in the past, is it mostly legal pricing?
No, most actually engineering.
Oh.
So, uh, we kind of had many site and land reviews lately that had stormwater review, but that's the primary one. The board is asked for that third-party review, we don't have any. Used to have the in-house engineering.
Yeah, right.
And actually, even at the end of the engineering department, they even were
They were not directing that.
Directing to third-party review for certain things. So that's one thing. In a couple of projects, we have had outside legal counsel, outside of the city
Okay.
Counsel, that was another aspect, though, albeit false, because typically, then in-house city council, we had legal.
With the stormwater plants, the only one I can think of is the storage units around base, but that cost that passed along to the applicant. It did, but they, so when they provided that, are you saying that the, the Cost of the board might curve would be for a party of the cities end to review those plans that the applicants provide, or?
So the common council passed a local law. Because at one, at one point, we didn't have written local law, and ended up actually reading issue of third-party reviewing, and the city didn't have any, any, um, method of enforcing that, like, you know? So, on behalf, I guess, I'm more saying that the board has to third-party review it. Through that local law, that's collected through the applicant, but it still has to somehow go through the city. Well, it goes through the city, because, uh, I think the city gets reimbursed by the applicant, and the applicant actually pays the
Right, okay.
Or the city pays the consultant.
Okay.
So that's, that's why I was asking which department.
Yeah, I'll get a better clarification on that.
Yeah. Um, and then my primary request was, we didn't always have a budget line item for training. And community developments, for the last two years, it actually included money within the budget for training.
Correct.
So that's, you know, if you want to go to the State Federation, uh, planning, New York State Planning Federation, there was a period when, uh, A lot of board members actually planned out, but of course, were stated on, you know, touching.
Well, that sounds fun.
Again, it wasn't
It's a great opportunity, and it's recommended, and maybe chance to be Do it, um, and we do have, uh, New York State Planning Federation subscription for, a, a group subscription, so, um, board members can sign onto that, and you should have received, uh, login information for Schuze.
That would be great to receive that again, because I know we have
It's buried in my
It's the same, same here, I don't know if I've seen it, like, a new
And actually, you're supposed to re-up it, I'm not sure if that happened, um, I can't remember Last year, when we subscribed to it, so it's a good check.
Because we have to get those training credits?
Yeah, um, and, yeah, I was gonna add that point in, um, so, um, on an annual basis, you're supposed to, um, A training for, um, learning credits for being a planning board member, and there's, there's options for various trainings, like the city county just held, hosted a training with New York State D O S planning team. Um, there's an A R A D X, um, planning, an A P A A R A D X planning day That typically is held, um, within the A R A D X, that covers a lot of the same materials for planning to be planning for board members. New York Planning Federation holds conferences, the town has had trainings. Um, there's online trainings through the New York Planning Federation website, and then we're also subscribed, we've, in the last year, we've been subscribed to Enidism, um, which is a national, um, uh
Certificate?
Yeah, a, yeah, a national, um, uh, it's like, uh, it's a magazine and, um, reporter on planning topics. So, um, so, uh, there, there's some great information, um, through that site, um, and I don't know if you've heard of it, but, um, so that kind of just takes you out of the state and local level, and kind of gives, gives a broader perspective.
And if you have other professional certifications for that training, a lot of those
Yeah, a lot of those cross over.
Cross over.
Um, you probably have, have training requirements that could cross over, but you still, you still
I have a couple, actually.
So it's many.
You've been doing a couple this year too.
Yeah, yes.
And on that note, if you all could, um, just make a note to yourselves to respond back to staff, um, The planning email to let us know what your current training status is, how many credit hours, um, What you have attended over the last year, that would be really helpful for us, um, because we are supposed to keep a lot of our training More, you know, um, on our system for, for each organization, but it's still important.
So like, we have those certificates of completion, should we go read those?
Yeah, that would be great, that's, that's perfect.
Okay.
If you don't have a certificate of, of completion, but know the date and, you know, training you went to, um, a simple email for that type of vice.
Does the town of Foxborough training, was that this year or last?
That was this year, that was over this summer.
That was, okay.
Yeah, because you heard that, right?
I was, yeah, I don't remember.
I don't.
I mean, the details are
Yeah, we can, we can unwrap that.
Oh, send it to you, honestly.
So, on, on that subject, if, if you can just confirm, you know, for the board, what you have for training budget opportunity? Second, that is your position, I don't, I don't know what that is, or is that something aligned item again this year or not?
It's, it is, um, and I advocated that that budget get increased from the last year. Um, it, that line item is shared with staff, training itself, so we kind of have to see where staff is hoping with
Sure.
Jared, but, um, it's definitely a conversation that we should have, and are grateful, do you guys have any of the opportunities?
The A P A been at the motel, is that for you or?
Yeah, that, that could help.
Okay, okay.
So within looking into that, um, The board also adopted, then through the council, adopted clear standards for the board and bylaws, I believe?
Yes.
Can staff prepare an updated act of that for all members?
Yes.
New members are seeing a lot of those for
Probably a good reminder, it's not a bad year.
It was just circulated in approval meeting.
So, yeah, it's probably not a bad thing to just review annually, that's a, for us.
For all of us.
Yeah, myself, yeah.
Uh, and
Doing the training lifestyle.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, we've talked about it in front of the staff, we've had so many different things, hideries going on, um, and I think it's, this is a great housekeeping.
Definitely.
For the board, and I appreciate you bringing that up.
For the board to understand, like, I added recusals, it was clear, it was, you know, the bylaws will give you different. Because we all, we all have things that are, you know, maybe pure question, public question, and that outlines things, but We also have other avenues to, if you have questions, you know, you always have the county council, legal council, They're open to ask questions, if you have any, any questions about that.
Yeah.
Um, we also have a, uh, Forget it, it's called an ethics board in the city, but that's another independent board within the, the city where you write for them. They will be working accordingly, so Just another within for board members, understanding.
Thank you, I have a copy of the file.
Photocopy for those, and that you have with your file.
Maybe a scan and a digital file?
Does everybody on the board have a copy of the zoning ordinance?
I was waiting for it. I was just waiting for the updated one.
So, so, so I, they used to, again, I, I had both of these, I think, since we've been like architectural standards. So, I don't know, can you find these readily online?
The zoning ordinance?
The zoning ordinance and the architectural guides.
Um, I'm not positive about the architectural guides, but the zoning ordinance, yes.
Okay.
I would say anybody who wants a hard copy. Keep this down.
Can I take a picture of the cover of the
Sure.
Secretary.
I, I think you can find it.
Yeah. I, I wonder, I've kind of been like, I don't know, should I?
I think that, again, the reason I ask is just because This bound copy, the, is it actually bound with the subdivision ordinance? The city did this just within, within the last five years, but I don't have a copy, so Just make sure everybody has the right code book in hand, and has access to it.
Yeah, um, hopefully, we'll have updated building, um, ready for adoption By August, September, but We have to go through the whole process. we have to go through the whole process, probably three months. But, um, what we would do is take a tally, I think you're going to see a tally, but, um, who all would like our copies? A lot of men, remember, it is always has to have a hard copy of the thing, of the ordinance, and, and then we could just take it and project.
Is it, is it, um, like, paper or scanned in, or is it like a PDF with like? Um, like, like if I had a digital copy on an iPad, I want to do a search function, like, would that work?
Actually.
I think if you just have a PDF version on a, on an iPad, my man, I'm gonna reference it like that too.
I'll show you where it lives, um, I, I go to it all the time on our website, um.
Then I don't need a hard copy.
Right here, the city code.
Cue up my reference.
Um, and then there's multiple ways to search it. Um, so by index, and then zoning is, um, chapter three sixty. Um, in, I wouldn't, I mean, you can try printing all this out on your own, but I wouldn't really.
When you search that though, that, that searches over the whole city.
It is.
While not just the zoning ordinance subdivision.
Right, how do I just have a PDF of just this? I think that, that's what, like, instead of having to click through that.
Yeah, that's what, one, one of the things I found difficult on, on, I mean, once again, if you understand what section you're looking.
Right, right, yeah, but no, I don't know where to, you know, I wouldn't know where to start, so I would need to, like, do keyword searches and get me something, get myself oriented, and then I could.
You know, if you get a PDF, if you get an iPad, then search that's great, but if, if you're not into that, having a hard copy, once you do have a site link in front of you, being able to just pull into a section and get to read yourself and applicant theory. It is nice, again, we haven't had a lot of that here lately, but it, it will.
Doesn't mean you won't say.
Yeah, you will, correct.
Any more to be?
Yeah, you had a couple, so I, I'm the one that sort of.
No, you're great, um, this is fantastic.
You had a couple other items in here, it looks like.
Um, yeah, so the local waterfront revitalization program, um, considered a six-day review with Department of State, um, and they have just, um, minor comments back that have already been revised, so, um, I'm looking to bring that forward to adoption.
Sure. It's busy.
It's, yeah, um, and so then we'll have the Comman adopted L W R P and associated local laws for early next year. With those adopted will, will be in business.
And essentially what that does, it kind of like puts legal teeth behind some of the plans that the cities made, effectively?
Um, it, it raises the bar for development, um, and it, it, in a way, it's kind of like a pre-approval process for some of the projects, even though they still have to go through, uh, you know,
Of, of approval.
The appropriate local reviews and still through all the seekers and everything, but, um, there's, there are state standards that have, have to be strictly defined by land developing, um, near or at the waterfront.
Yes.
Um, so it just helps to strike a greater balance between development and requirement.
And again, that's a little more backing too, right, like when we're approving things, we can see if they align with the Comman and L W R P.
Yeah, um, yeah, so then there's the consistency board, which will be a proposed local law, um, that is currently in the, kind of like, sort of the draft, local waterfront revitalization. Um, and then another local law will be establishing, um, urban innovation in any area, um, and then overall, it will create an overlay, a zoning overlay for the city, you know, the waterfront area. Waterfront area, right now, we do have an overlay, um, but the, for this draft plan, it actually proposes expanding that overlay all the way up to the, um, on the river. So going, yeah, the overlay currently is just basically along the waterfront.
Sure.
And then the proposed would be, be existing and then on the river. So, um, and then we have a smart code Plattsburgh public workshop, um, for residential design scheduled for January ten from six to eight P M here at City Hall. Um, so that is expected to start within the old council chambers with, um, display boards and, um, opportunities to vote, uh, for housing heights and designs, um, and just kind of get a big worldview of, um, some of the, uh, the zoning adjustments that the, uh, Public Advisory Committee has been, um, working through and recommending, um, and and then it will go into more formal presentation of all the work that has gone into it, um, and provide a kind of feedback opportunity.
And that public workshop is essentially going to address the, our, our zones of the current ordinance.
Um, it's essentially going to address, uh, the R H, mostly the R H and R ones of districts. Um, we've gotten as far as those two districts for all of the proposed allowable uses, um, and batteries and density.
So, like, if, having been up on that, on the state, I understand some of the discussion, I would strongly encourage all members to, you know, there's draft materials that I believe is available with staff. Take a look at it, there's a lot of interesting proposals in this that are changes.
Yeah, um.
The R districts, uh, it'd be good for planning and good for all of you, by planning board to understand what's being proposed. Couple of the workshops you can.
I fully agree, and then, uh, if you don't, um, already go visit the site or haven't signed up, um, I strongly suggest, um, signing up with MyCityPlattsburgh, because the project, Smart Code Plattsburgh is, has its own project page there, and we have been regularly providing updates and, um, the last public workshop presentation is located on there, um, and you can follow along with the timeframe, the, the process of, the progression of the project, um, and see all of the background that has been accumulated to get us to the point that we're at today.
And the other thing a lot about, I was thinking about this as you were explaining, is, you know, the last, you want to call it significant change towards zoning ordinance, it's like, out. When I say significant, it really wasn't that significant, it was that the airport space was dissolved, they came over and the city had to address that area, so what are we going to do with it? Yeah, it wasn't, you know, also if you look at like our zoning ordinance, it has not been rewritten since, like.
Eighties.
Yeah.
So whatever we do right now, that the city holds true with like a thirty, forty year plan.
You know what that?
I mean, hopefully, again, but that's.
Yeah, it is a participatory process, it should be, um, I think the more people looking at it and doing a three sixty view and they're, it, unfortunately, we're probably not going to get it a hundred percent right directly out of the gates, but the more eyes on it, um, and analysis of it, I think will help make as refined an update that, um, that the public is, you know, is comfortable, um, having and the staff and our boards can work with reasonably. Come on out, it's gonna be a party. Um, but if you can't be there in person, there's going to be online opportunities through the Mike's City Plattsburgh page.
Is that presentation going to be, uh, online as well?
The, um, I think we'll do a Zoom, so you can follow it in on Zoom, um, and then afterwards, it will be saved to MyCityPlattsburgh. That's, that's what we.
Formal invitations going out by mail to different?
What was that?
Do you have like formal invitations going out to, just to try to make it circulate through the whole project?
Yeah, um, we, so we're trying to heavily, more heavily utilize the Mike's City Plattsburgh platform. Um, so people who are signed up there can receive the notifications that we have a workshop coming up, um, but that's a really good point, um. We, we would like to reach as many
Actually.
Interested parties as possible.
That is a good question, you, uh, I know that the consultants have reached out and have individual
Working sessions?
Working sessions and meetings with local interested, interested parties. Uh, it was, are they going to send out an email chain to all of those interested parties about the workshop?
To all the stakeholders?
All the stakeholders that they've injured, you know, I would say that they would.
Um, we haven't discussed that, but that's a good point.
They would officially notify them that.
Yeah.
You know, scares clients from.
Yeah, we've, um, we've been encouraging everybody to sign up to MyCityPlattsburgh and follow along, just, there's so much, um, just tasks to do that they go along with this project, so we're trying to consolidate and streamline in what areas we can have a there's some, it's just the nature of the beast, it's going to be taking a lot of work.
I think that, I think that online website version is, is great for getting people to log in and show up to the workshop. Whatever we. So last item, it looks like, uh, government climate action.
Yeah, uh, so in, I believe that this twenty twenty-one, the city got a thirty thousand dollar grant from New York City to do, um, um, to conduct a project of assessing our climate smart community, where we stand according to the Climate Smart Communities Checklist, which is a New York State, um, collaborative program, um. I don't know that I, you're great. Um, we have, we also have a couple members of the planning board that are part of the Climate Task Force team that is a premier stakeholder of this government operations climate action plan, um, but, so that, um, backing up, that, uh, thirty thousand dollar grant, um, uh, for the project, uh, has resulted in an effort to complete a government operations climate action plan. Um, and it has been an approximately a year-long process, um, start to almost end, and we now have a draft plan, um, that is specific to government operations, um, not the greater community of Plattsburgh, Plattsburgh residents, so we have, um, conducted, uh, a full greenhouse, as full as we could, a full greenhouse gas inventory of the city and created a baseline, um, of, for energy usage, uh, based on the available data that the city could provide, had, we had access to. Um, and so that baseline is like twenty nineteen, and then we're projecting forward to see, you know, how, how, in what ways can, what is the city's greenhouse gas consumption now with the existing consumption, um, based on the twenty nineteen data? And how can, what recommendations can be made to reduce that, the production of greenhouse gases? Um, and that's basically all that the plan entails, we did an initial survey of all departments to determine after we did an, a draft in the reporting greenhouse gases, um, from financial and consumption data, then we did a, a survey to all departments to better understand what their consumption habits were, and then we circled back and did stakeholder interviews, um, provided, uh, an overview of the results for the greenhouse gas consumption, and then the, uh, assembled a draft plan. Out of all of that, and have circulated that plan and received a stakeholder feedback on that, um, with, so the main stakeholders included for it, um, were, um, ma- managers and supervisors throughout the city, um, in various buildings and departments and the Climate Task Force. So we are looking to get to a final draft of that and then hopefully have that, um, ready to present to council early next year and move forward to adopting that and having, um, another set of criteria to meet.
Alicia, do you anticipate or see a future with like a part-time or Christmas time just as a thing ability from the city here in Los Angeles?
That, I, that's kind of above my pay grade. Um, I don't, I don't know at this point in time, that's more within our council. Um, but, um, I believe if my memory serves me right, that that recommendation is going to be included, maybe included in this plan, it, I can't remember entirely, but it will be included in the plan, um, but I know that it has been proposed by the Climate Task Force Chair to the Mayor Committee, um, but there's a lot of variables that need to be considered, um, ahead of, of, of delineation, um, which would include all of the existing city. Priorities and budgets, all that.
To be determined?
Yeah, to be determined.
We can make a budget neutral and carbon neutral, I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah.
That's kind of, that's part of it, right?
Yeah, yeah, but, um, I, yeah, it all, it all depends.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, any other questions? Alicia. Thank you. Absolutely.
If not, go and motion to a chair.
Okay.
All four must raise their hands at once.
First of all.
Okay. Pick one, two.
Yeah, that one.
All, all of David.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great job leading the work.
All right.
You didn't even hit the gavel though.
I don't, I didn't get to.
From that just. So then close the.
What was I supposed to?